Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and all of you that are viewing by the viewing audience tonight. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting for Monday, May the 13th, 2013. I'd like to, at this time, call the meeting to order. And we have with us tonight, for our opening ceremony, the presentation of colors will be conducted by the Air Force Junior ROTC Unit from J.M. Robinson High School. And we have the cadets that's going to be doing that for us tonight. Our Cadet Second Lieutenant Quinn Hemler, Cadet Second Lieutenant Justin Tyrone's, Cadet Second Lieutenant Matthew Crowder, Cadet Second Lieutenant Christina Hodges, and Cadet Second Lieutenant Nicholas Clemmer. And tonight, the cadets are being led by Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose, United States Air Force retired, and Master Sergeant Wayne Altrum, United States Air Force retired. Would you all please stand and join me in the presentation of colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, that right there, ladies and gentlemen, is your tax dollars at work. I'll tell you one thing, excellent, excellent performance tonight by the ROTCs from out at J. Robinson. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, now, we'll have, let's see, the setting of the agenda. Board members, you've had the agenda for several days now. We had the work session last Monday, so we've had all of these items, and we've discussed them and so forth. But now, do I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as it presented?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Harrison made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kiggram, second to motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries seven oh. The agenda's set. Thank you, Ms. Six oh. I'm sorry, Mr. Schumacher's out of the country. Okay, let's see. Now, we'll move on into our recognitions here, and we've got, the first one is 4.1, Impact Through Education Awards. And Ms. Ronnie Boone is on her way to the podium, and she calls your name out. Don't forget my little briefing in the beginning. Okay, Ms. Boone, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I stand before you tonight to present the final Impact Through Education Awards for the 2012-2013 school year. And I want to extend our sincere appreciation once again to Concord Printing for sponsoring these awards for us this school year. We certainly appreciate their support of our efforts to recognize our outstanding students and staff, and look forward to a continued partnership with them in the coming years. Now, on to tonight's awards. The schools in the spotlight this evening are Wolf Meadow Elementary School and Harold E. Winkler Middle School. We'll begin with Wolf Meadow Elementary School, and I'd like to invite any members of the school's administrative team to please come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Wolf Meadow is Riley Holbert. Would Riley and her family please come forward?
She impresses all of her teachers with her quiet drive and gentle demeanor every day. She is a sweet and compassionate girl. Riley is an exemplary scholar at Wolf Meadow Elementary and one of the school's hardest working students. She is an asset to any class and always goes the extra mile to do her very best. Riley is a leader and currently serves on the Student Council. She's also active in other extracurricular activities such as Math 24, the Garden Club, the School Chorus, and County Chorus. Riley is constantly going out of her way to help her peers and her school. She is a Safety Patrol Officer, and every morning welcomes students and staff to school with her smiling face and kind words. She is exactly the type of student that every teacher would want in class and every parent would be proud to have. Thank you, Riley, for making an impact at Wolf Meadow Elementary School. Congratulations.
Would Shawn and his family please come forward?
Shawn is a fifth grader and model student at Wolf Meadow Elementary. He strives to excel both in and out of the classroom. He is a kind and compassionate young man who genuinely cares about the well-being of his classmates. While being a leader by example, Shawn is also willing to help others succeed in the classroom. He is an active participant around the school. He has been a member of the Student Council in both fourth and fifth grades. He's involved in many extracurricular activities such as the Drama Club, Math 24 Club, and the KC Club, which is Kindness and Compassion Club. He participated in the after-school chorus and was selected for the All-County Chorus as well. Shawn is also a black belt in Taekwondo. He maintains excellent study habits and work habits while involved in his many activities. He has maintained an A average in all of his classes. Shawn is a pleasure to have in class and a great asset to any classroom and any teacher. Thank you, Shawn, for making an impact through education at Wolf Meadow Elementary School.
Our next honoree from Wolf Meadow is Shawn Basinger. Would Ms. Basinger and her family please come forward?
Shawn is a fifth grader and model student at Wolf Meadow Elementary. He strives to excel both in and out of the classroom. He is a kind and compassionate young man who genuinely cares about the well-being of his classmates. While being a leader by example, Shawn is also willing to help others succeed in the classroom. He is an active participant around the school. He has been a member of the Student Council in both fourth and fifth grades. He's involved in many extracurricular activities such as the Drama Club, Math 24 Club, and the KC Club, which is Kindness and Compassion Club. He participated in the after-school chorus and was selected for the All-County Chorus as well. Shawn is also a black belt in Taekwondo. He maintains excellent study habits and work habits while involved in his many activities. He has maintained an A average in all of his classes. Shawn is a pleasure to have in class and a great asset to any classroom and any teacher. Thank you, Shawn, for making an impact through education at Wolf Meadow Elementary School.
Our next honoree from Wolf Meadow Elementary School is Ms. Kimberly Basinger. Would Ms. Basinger and her family please come forward?
Kimberly Basinger is the lead speech teacher at Wolf Meadow Elementary School, but she is much more than that. She is a phenomenal speech teacher, mentor, and lead speech teacher for the district. Her coworkers on the EC team know that she is the go-to person for all types of questions and issues. She is one of the most knowledgeable leaders in the building and is always willing to help out regular and EC teachers with interventions and suggestions for improving speech and language skills. She has a plethora of knowledge and resources to help all the students in the school. But some of Mrs. Basinger's most noticeable work is not done in the speech classroom but in the school's cafeteria. Every morning, Ms. Basinger is one of the first people on duty at breakfast and is the one everyone looks to in order to know where to sit. A person would be rich if they had a dime for every time she has walked back and forth across the cafeteria floor. Ms. Basinger runs the after-school Drama Club, Drama Wolves, and every year produces a wonderful show on the Wolf Meadow stage. She directs, produces, and makes the costumes usually by herself, or with the assistance of her husband Will, whom she volunteers to help. Her costume skills are so wonderful that she is also the head seamstress and supplier of clothes and costumes to Wolfgang, the school's mascot. She also organizes the annual school talent show, which is one of the best-attended events at Wolf Meadow and definitely is one of the highlights of the school year. Bottom line, Wolf Meadow Elementary is a better place to work and learn because of Kim Basinger. If every staff member in every school were as organized, dedicated to student success, and willing to go above and beyond the call of duty, every school would be full of enriched and happy students. Thank you for all that you do to make Wolf Meadow Elementary the place that it is and for making the impact that you have on the lives of students. Congratulations.
And our final honoree from Wolf Meadow Elementary School this evening is Ms. Elena Papadatos. Would Ms. Papadatos and her family please come forward?
Elena Papadatos is Wolf Meadow Elementary's Hispanic Parent Liaison. This is her first year in this position after serving as a substitute teacher at Wolf Meadow Elementary for the previous few years. Her daily duties include translating meetings, newsletters, and notes from parents. She calls parents and reaches out to the school's Hispanic community to help get them involved and make them feel a part of the school. She has translated many documents and will look up many different translations of the same thing to see which one she thinks parents will understand best. Mrs. P., as everyone calls her, has helped bridge the communication gap between the school and its non-English-speaking families and helped Wolf Meadow Elementary become a better place at meeting the needs of all students. Though she is only a part-time employee, she is one of the most sought-after employees in the school. Mrs. P. also sponsors an after-school club, Amigos. The Amigos Club teaches students the Spanish language and Hispanic culture. She is very dedicated to the students and staff. She calls parents over and over until she can get in touch with them to make sure that they are aware of classroom activities, field trips, and if there are any problems at the school. Mrs. P. has made a major impact on education for not only the Hispanic students and families but for the entire school. Thank you, Mrs. P., and congratulations.
Next, we'll recognize students and staff from Harold E. Winkler Middle School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Winkler Middle School Administrative Team to please come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Winkler Middle School is Laura Crook. Would Laura and her family please come forward?
Laura is a positive and friendly student who constantly uplifts other students and encourages them. She is a unique and bright student who excels in academics, and she is willing to help others excel with her. She is both inquisitive about and intrigued by the world around her. She uses this explorative nature to delve further into her studies. She thinks critically about both academic and personal decisions. Laura is a member of the Battle of the Books team and also plays in the seventh-grade band. She's also an athlete who her coaches describe as having a positive attitude which allows her to learn new concepts quickly. She is a true team player, and she has been a well-lit asset on both the basketball and volleyball teams at the school. Congratulations, Laura, and thank you for making an impact at Winkler Middle School.
Our next honoree from Winkler Middle School is Haley Louder. Would Haley and her family please come forward?
Haley is a wonderful student and a remarkable young woman. She embodies all that a teacher wishes and dreams to walk through the door on that first day of school. She works hard, gives of herself to others, and shows respect to all. Haley has the innate ability to know when someone is in need of that little something special to get them through a class period, and she jumps right in without having to be asked to do so. Haley is not only a big sister at home to a very special little sister, but to some of her classmates as well. She is also a friend and tutor to many at the school. She has taken many of her peers under her wing to help them soar without expecting anything in return, except to see another person feel good about accomplishing a goal he or she once thought was unattainable. She has been a member of the Battle of the Books team for two years, and this year she stepped back to groom the seventh and sixth graders that will step into her place next year as she moves on to high school. This act speaks volumes alone. This is a person who's not afraid to let someone else's light shine to benefit her team. Not only is Haley a wonderful and inspiring person within the school environment, but also in her community. She's an active member of her church and its youth group, and has been a vital member of the Cabarrus Dance Academy where she has had the opportunity to dance principal roles. Haley is an amazing young woman with an amazing future. Congratulations, Haley, and thank you for making an impact at Winkler Middle School.
Our next honoree from Winkler Middle School is Ms. Amy Heldrich. Would Ms. Heldrich and her family please come forward?
Amy Heldrich is the teacher that everyone should experience the joy of having at least once in their lives. Ms. Heldrich currently serves as an English Language Arts teacher at Winkler Middle School. She has worked with Cabarrus County children for 13 years. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in Education, a Bachelor of Arts degree in English Literature, and English Writing from Concord University in Athens, West Virginia, as well as a Master's degree in Middle Grades Education from UNC Charlotte. She serves on the Cabarrus County Schools Curriculum Team for ELA, the Content Literacy Continuum Leadership Team, the RTI Leadership Team, and helps coach the Winkler Battle of the Books team. Before coming to Winkler, Ms. Heldrich was the recipient of the Jane Spainhour Leadership Award at Concord Middle School. Amy's enthusiasm is contagious, and she graciously helps her peers develop lessons, find the perfect text for their learning point, or come up with ideas for how to reach students who are struggling. She is constantly driven to find ways to make sure every student she encounters feels someone cares about not only their grades but their well-being and their success as readers and writers. Her students learn greater respect for themselves, their teachers, and the control they have over their education. Congratulations, Ms. Heldrich, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Winkler Middle School.
And our final honoree this evening from Winkler Middle School is Ms. Joanne McMillan. Would Ms. McMillan and her family please come forward?
Joanne McMillan is the Media Assistant at Winkler Middle School. She has worked with the students of Cabarrus County for 14 years, encouraging their reading and helping to find books that meet their needs. She is well-read and has the unique ability to discuss what students enjoy reading and pair them with books that they will love. Teachers appreciate her ability to respectfully help them with technology and finding materials. They find her to be an expert on the literature their students need. The members of her technology and media team rely on her organizational strengths, willingness to help, and humor to get their work done. Her colleagues feel that the title "Media Assistant" really does not fully express how valuable a partner she is to the media specialists, the teachers, and the students. Without her efforts and contributions at Winkler, the school just would not feel whole. When you add her outstanding work to the love and care she has for her friends, her son, her husband, and her mother, you find yourself in the company of a remarkable person. Congratulations, Ms. McMillan, and thank you for making an impact through education at Winkler Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Boone, and once again, thank all of you who've had an impact through education for this month. Our next award will be going to the Teachers of the Year, and we got Ms. Augur here, and I was wondering if Mr. Adams ever got here? There he is. We were looking for you earlier. Okay, so we're glad you're here with us. Thank you.
Good evening. We are excited to present this evening our Teachers of the Year from our individual schools, our Teacher of the Year finalists, and our district-wide Cabarrus County Schools' Teacher of the Year. We're grateful to SunTrust Bank for its sponsorship of our Teacher of the Year recognition, and welcome Chris Adams to join me in this presentation. Chris manages the Cabarrus, Stanley, and Rowan County branches, bringing over 20 years of banking experience to his position. He lives in Harrisburg, North Carolina with his wife Fiona, and their four boys ranging in age from nine months to seven years. Along with the gracious sponsorship by SunTrust Bank, the Hayes Foundation, in cooperation with the Center for International Understanding, also will send two of our Teachers of the Year to India this summer. Other important contributors to the district-wide selection process are our judges, who interview the school winners and visit the classrooms of the finalists. I'd like to announce them, and if any of them are here this evening, please feel free to stand where you're seated. Sarah Parnell is a judge. She was our 2007/08 CCS Teacher of the Year, and she teaches AIG at Mount Pleasant Elementary. Beth Jewell was our 2010/2011 CCS Teacher of the Year. She teaches kindergarten at WM Irvin Elementary. Mariko Weinhardt, she is our 2012/13 CCS Teacher of the Year, and she's a lead teacher at Carl A. Fur Elementary. Stephen Bookhart, Assistant Principal at J. and Freeze Magnet School. Michael Jolly, Principal at Northwest Cabarrus High School. And Lenora Baron, 2003/2004 CCS Teacher of the Year and Lead Elementary PE Teacher for the district. Please throw me in a round of applause to thank our judges. There is a famous quote by Forest Whitcraft, "A hundred years from now, it will not matter what kind of car I drove, what kind of house I lived in, how much money I had in the bank, but the world may be a better place because I made a difference in the life of a child." And tonight, we present to you our board, a stellar Cabarrus County Schools' group of teachers who've been acknowledged by their peers and our judges for truly making that difference. And once our teachers who are here this evening have entered and been recognized, I will ask Chris Adams to make that presentation to them. And we are going to begin introducing the teachers who are here this evening to you. From AT Allen, we have Melanie Hill. Beverly Hills Elementary School, Jan Reagan. Carl A. Fur Elementary School, Brian Patterson. Charles E. Boger Elementary School, Kimberly Hines. Coltrane Webb Elementary School, Minette Finney Lewis. Concord Middle School, Brenda Todd. Harold E. Winkler Middle School, Karen Powell. Harris Road Middle School, Jody K. Skeen. Harrisburg Elementary School, Michelle Allen. Hickory Ridge Middle School, Tierney Fairchild. J. and Freeze Magnet School, Amanda Sliva. Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Sherry Christie. Mount Pleasant High School, William Bart Tolbert. Mount Pleasant Middle School, Erica Barrier. Northwest Cabarrus High School, Anna Blessington. Northwest Cabarrus Middle School, Alice Aldridge. Opportunity School, Jody Laria. Patriots Elementary School, Brenda Eason. Rocky River Elementary School, Melanie Patillo Edwards. Royal Oaks Elementary School, Sherry Kilby. WR Odell Elementary School, Carrie McGee. WM Irvin Elementary School, Jamoki Bernie. Weddington Hills Elementary School, Ashley Bumgardner. Wyancoff Elementary School, Randy Skaggs. And Wolf Meadow Elementary School, Jerry Glasgow. Cindy Lane, did I get your name? Good. We have Cindy Lane from Bethel Elementary School. And now for the finalists. Central Cabarrus High School, Justin Pierce. Cox Mill- Cox Mill High School, Heather Wilson. JM Robinson High School, Jennifer McCarthy. R. Brown MacAllister Elementary School, Emily Cossey. And our district-wide CCS Teacher of the Year from CC Griffin, Courtney Smith. Please join me in a round of applause.
Well, guys, I'll tell you what, my team's on here, and I actually came from a team meeting tonight. And once you put a microphone in front of me, I can take the entire night. So I know we're in a packed room, and you guys are all waiting, but one of the things I'll tell you, about six years ago, my family and I relocated to Cabarrus County. And the, you know, one of the things that actually was my wife who looked at was the school district. And I've been part of these for about six years now. Excuse me, and every time I leave, I actually am impressed, and it validates the decision that we made to move here. So sorry for getting emotional, but it just, you know, I know what you guys do on a day-in, day-out basis, and the impact that you guys, I'm sending four kids to you guys here real soon. I heard Harrisburg Elementary, they're good kids, so I promise. But I can't tell you enough how much, you know, I really appreciate the job that each and every one of you guys do. So, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So, without further ado... All right, Justin Pierce. Heather Wilson. Jennifer McCarthy. Emily Cossey. And Courtney Smith.
Thanks again to SunTrust, and if you can turn in place, shake hands with the board, and thank you.
Good night. Thank you so much.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to carry on with the meeting here. We've got Ms. Augur at the podium, and you're ready to go now for the NC PAPA High School Principal of the Year, and Ms. Augur is here to talk to us about that. So Ms. Augur, when you're ready, we're ready.
Yes, sir. Central Cabarrus High School Principal Lynn Reimer, previously recognized as the Southwest Regional Principal of the Year, was recently selected as the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association High School Principal of the Year. Lot of excitement this evening. Ms. Reimer will now be the state's nominee for National High School Principal of the Year through the National Association of Secondary School Principals. I'd like to introduce Ms. Reimer's administrative team, who's up here with me this evening, Andrew Crook, Jackie Hartley, Jason Valentine, and her principal intern, Amy Steele. And they are here this evening just to share a little of what makes Ms. Reimer so special. So, without any further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Andrew.
Thank you, Ms. Augur. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, and members of the board. Again, my name is Andrew Crook, and I'm the Assistant Principal of Instruction at Central Cabarrus High School. When Ms. Augur came to us a few days ago and asked us to comment about Ms. Reimer's leadership, we immediately came up with a list of accolades that we would love to share with you. Now, as much as each one of these individuals here would like to come up to this podium and talk to you about the great things that Ms. Reimer has done for Central, we knew that that would keep you all here to the wee hours of the morning. So instead of that, we came up with a better idea, and we felt that it was most important that you heard from the people that we serve, Central staff and students. So we prepared a brief video that shows you just what Ms. Reimer means to us.
We are so incredibly proud of Ms. Reimer and her accomplishments, and I don't think there is anyone at our school who doesn't believe that she deserves this.
First off, I must say you are an amazing woman.
She's a people person, and she's out there, she's mixing, and she's mingling with the students.
Very, very firm, but she's also very fair in how she deals with the staff and students across the board.
You lead by example, and everything that you tell your students to do also seen in you, and that is a phenomenal leader.
Ms. Reimer always makes us feel like we're an actual student and not just a number. She shows that she really cares about us if we're not having a good day, and she can tell, she'll pull us aside and ask us what's going on.
She really works with Central Cabarrus, Daniel, new programs like STEM. It really worked to make this the best school that it could be.
I really believe this, and I deserve this award. She always comes, and makes people feel like welcome, relaxed, and cared, and that's how we feel about her. We care about her, and we're so proud of her for what she's done for Central.
I appreciate everything that you do for us as students. You walk down the hallway with a smile, you encourage everyone to do what they should do.
In any institution where your stakeholders are involved, that is a plus. The students must know that the principal has had their best interests at heart.
I feel like Ms. Reimer knows what's going on in my classroom, and in my clubs, and in my productions.
You are absolutely fantastic, phenomenal leader. I am very privileged to be under your leadership. I've learned so much.
She provides structure. She's fair and consistent, not only with faculty and the staff, also with the students.
She's not an arts teacher, but I feel like she understands what it is that we're trying to accomplish, and is completely supportive of all of the arts at Central Cabarrus.
Just the overall school spirit has changed just by her leadership being here, and it's kind of become contagious from the administration down to the staff to the students, and it's been a breath of fresh air.
Amazing, because Central is number one in this area, and that has a major part to do with you. And I truly thank you for being who you are, and for being that loving person for us. Congratulations again.
Congratulations, Ms. Reimer.
Congratulations. Very, very, very much deserved.
Congratulations, Ms. Reimer, on getting North Carolina Principal of the Year.
Congratulations. We love you.
We love you, Ms. Reimer.
Thank you for all you do for us. We appreciate you more than you'll ever know.
Yes, we love you very much. Thank you.
You're awesome.
Congratulations.
Okay. So, Ms. Reimer, in closing, we do have a plaque for you as 2013/2014 North Carolina High School Principal of the Year. And thank you very much. If you can get to the board, I'm sure they'd love to shake your hands. Thank you for all your high school family being here tonight.
Now, right there's a tight-knit family group, I think. Wouldn't you think so? I appreciate the support that they have given to Ms. Reimer. She is an excellent principal, there's no doubt about that. Not to mention that Central's my old alma mater, you know? Went there, you know, I have to toot my horn once in a while, you know? But many years ago, we won't talk about that part. Okay? All right, we're going to need to move along so we can cover the rest of the agenda. The next item on our list is Ms. Ann Burr. She's already at the podium, she's waiting on me, but we're going to do the Governor's School Candidates, and so, Ms. Burr, when you get ready, we're ready.
Absolutely. Good evening. Today, we would like to honor our high school students who have been selected to attend the 2013 session of the North Carolina Governor's School. The Governor's School program is a six-week residential program open to rising juniors and seniors. It is the oldest statewide summer program for academically gifted high school students in the nation. The two Governor's School campuses are Governor's School West at Salem College in Winston-Salem, and Governor's School East at Meredith College in Raleigh. Eleven high school students from Cabarrus County have been selected to attend this year. Dr. Jason Van Hookelum... Ben, would you... Here he comes. Will help me to recognize these students. Thank you. Students, as I call out your name, please come forward to be recognized and congratulated. Remain up front until all have been recognized, and then the school board will also congratulate you. Our first candidate is Sami Bin Rashid from Northwest High School, and his area is mathematics. Megan Hux, Northwest Cabarrus High School for Art. Alexis Oriol, JM Robinson High School, Mathematics. James Sheridan, JM Robinson High School, Social Science. Victoria Baldowski, JM Robinson High School, Instrumental Music, Trumpet. Macy Fairchild, Hickory Ridge High School, English. Frederick Machelli, Hickory Ridge High School, Theater. Colton Redman, Mount Pleasant High School, English. Matthew Gluff, Concord High School, Art. Casey Callaway, Cox Mill High School, Dance. Sydney Short, Cox Mill High School, Dance. Congratulations on your achievements. We know that you will represent your schools, your family, and Cabarrus County Schools well. Thank you.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move right along. 4.5 will be our class of 2013 Appointments and Scholarships, and we've got Ms. Donna Smith at the podium.
This is truly an exciting time for the seniors in our county, because they are busy preparing for post-secondary work. Excuse me. There are many recognitions to come for these students at their schools and also in the community, and tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate with several of our students. At this time, I'd like to invite Aleah Johnson to the front. I'd also like to invite Virginia Long to the front. And also Hamilton Jones. These students are representing many fine students in Cabarrus County, and I'd like to share a little bit with you about their achievements. Aleah Johnson is a senior at Central Cabarrus High School, and she has been awarded the Queen's University Presidential Scholarship. Queen's is a private coed master's-level university with a commitment to liberal arts and professional studies. And the Presidential Scholarship that Aleah has earned is a merit-based scholarship that will provide full tuition for four years. It's awarded annually, and it's a very highly competitive scholarship, and we salute Aleah tonight. There are five Military Service Academies. Three of the five reside within the Department of Defense, and two reside within the Department of Transportation. Tonight, we want to focus on two of the academies, the U.S. Naval Academy and the U.S. Air Force Academy. Nominations are based on whole-person evaluation. Factors such as academic achievements, extracurricular activities, leadership skills, physical aptitude, character, and motivation are taken into consideration and compared among applicants. Although many of the qualifications are similar, each academy operates under its own admissions guidelines. And applying to Military Service Academy is just like applying to any well-regarded college, but in addition, you must obtain a nomination from your member of Congress. Attendance at the academies includes free education as well as room and board, and it comes with an obligation and a commitment to serve in the U.S. military for a minimum of five years after graduation. Tonight, we're very fortunate to see Virginia Logan Long from Cox Mill High School, who has been awarded or appointed to the U.S. Air Force Academy, and we salute you. And we salute Hamilton Jones from... And we salute Hamilton Jones from J.M. Robinson High School, who has been appointed to the As we give them an opportunity to meet the board, to congratulate them, we will say, "Stay tuned. These are the finest in Cabarrus County, and this is great." Thank you.
That is not an easy accomplishment, to be appointed like that to the Naval Academy, to the Air Force Academy. That's something very, very highly spoken of, and I appreciate the effort that they put forth in being able to attend. We're gonna move along to our, and Ms. Smith's there, 4.6, the North Carolina Safety Patrol of the Year.
I'd like to invite Carson Masterson to the front. I am eager to tell you about Carson. Carson is the AAA of the Carolina Safety Patrol of the Year for North Carolina, and nominations for this award are based on the criteria of safety initiatives, safety skills, leadership qualities, school involvement, citizenship, and volunteerism. She was recognized on April 18th of the Bobcats game and received a trophy. It's very important that I tell you a little bit about Carson. She is a fifth grader at Bethel Elementary School, and for Carson, Safety Patrol runs very deep. She has four older cousins who were also Safety Patrol members, and she is one of the first in the school to spread the word about safety. We understand you've created posters, signs, you've made commercials, and you've made movies. She works about any Safety Patrol station that you ask her to do, and she's such an important part of the Bethel Car Rider Line. She knows the safe way to unload vehicles in direct traffic, as well as, yeah, traffic of the students, I need to imply. I was moving you into a different profession last night. But directs young students into the building so that they're always safe. She makes sure that students are walking the correct way and also the safe way to class. And you also assist young students in walking to class and teachers who might need some extra assistance. Carson is also co-captain of Bethel's Fire and Life Safety Bowl Team. She's on the morning news team. And Mrs. Dobbins, the teacher at Bethel, says Carson is so nice and helpful to everyone. She is an awesome kid. Carson is willing to set the bar high and go above and beyond in all things. Her energy, kindness, and talented are well-moted. And what is important for the board to know is this is the third annual School Safety Patrol of the Year recognition. Bethel, out of this North Carolina award, also had the number-one first-year winner the year the award was given. This is truly an honor for Bethel students and staff. We salute Carson as the AAA of the Carolina Safety Patrol of the Year for North Carolina. Thank you.
You know, safety's very important. That's a great accomplishment. All right, 4.7 on the agenda, Board Members, is the Mathematics and Science Education Network, our state winner, and we've got Mr. Ben Alvidt ready to go.
I've asked Mindy Hutchins to join me at the microphone. I thought it better that she present this award tonight, but I wanted to say a few words about her. Mindy's been with Cabarrus County Schools for 11 years. The last six years, she's been at C.C. Griffin and has also taught at the Metis Program and the pre-college program down at UNCC as a science and ESL teacher. And she works directly with the students, coaches them, and just is very dedicated to it. So I thought, who better to really talk about the student tonight? So, turn it over to her.
I would like to recognize Juan Manoara's Race. Juan is a senior at Central Cabarrus High School and part of the Metis Pre-College Program. In April, Juan won the state competition for the high school bobble rockets division, for the M.S.E.N. competition. M.S.E.N. stands for Mathematics and Science Education Network. The mission of the North Carolina M.S.E.N. Pre-College Program is to provide year-round academic enrichment programs that encourage and prepare students to pursue college degrees that lead to a career in science, engineering, technology, and mathematics. The program at UNC Charlotte involves a one-week summer camp and 10 Saturday sessions throughout the school year. Each year, the M.S.E.N. competition is held at a different participating state university. The competition this year was held at UNC Charlotte. Students from the pre-college programs at NC State, Chapel Hill, Winston-Salem State, Fayetteville State, Elizabeth City State, and Charlotte were involved. Juan has been committed to coming to the pre-college Saturday classes and summer camps for the past five years since he was in eighth grade. I have had the privilege of teaching Juan during the five years that he has been in the program. I have seen him grow and become a confident leader throughout the program. He has won the bobble rocket competition for the past four years. In high school, he is involved in several clubs, including Link Crew, FBLA, Student Council Class Representative, Band, Tennis, and Soccer. His favorite class is Band. He also works with the community by volunteering at the Hispanic Learning Center, Joy Prom, and is currently the Vice President of the International Youth Group. His future plans are to attend college and major in biomedical engineering. Congratulations, Juan.
It's always a highlight of the evening when we get to do that. I guess there won't be a lot going on now that school's about to run out, so we'll pick back up on it, though, I guess, about September, I guess, October sometime. But anyway, we're gonna move on, and Board Members, you've had the minutes from the April 8th work session and the minutes from April 15th business meeting, and I hope you've had a chance to review all of the minutes there, and are there any corrections, or do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as presented?
I've got one comment.
Okay, Mr. Walter.
On the April 8th minutes, on page five, we're talking about the Biotech Academy at Northwest Cabarrus High. Bottom of the third paragraph, we discuss potential academy options for Cox Mill, J.M. Robinson, and Mount Pleasant. I'd like the record to reflect what those were. I don't really quite remember what they are, but we all had suggestions. I know it was late in the evening, but if, if it's okay with the rest of the board, I'd like the record to reflect what those, what our suggestions were, for discussion purposes later.
Now, whether we'll have those or not, other than the video, we've got the video to fall back on, so I think we can do that. Don't you think so, Ms. Monroe? We'll make the change there. Are there, are there any other changes or recommendations? Okay, now, do I have a motion that the minutes be approved with the addition of the language that was used in the work session?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Harrison made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Walter made the, he seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved, 6-0 with the changes as noted. Okay? We need to move on into our report section now. And this is an opportunity for the Board Chair to say a few things, and then after I finish, Dr. Shepherd, I'll have a chance to say a few things. And I don't really have anything planned, but what I did want to say was, particularly about the, the item that stirred up a lot of people, and I've had tons of emails referenced to teacher assistance, and, and I appreciate, you know, you're sending me emails, and, not that I want thousands more, but, you know, but I appreciate you sending these emails to me and the board members expressing your concern about teacher assistance, and to be perfectly honest with you, it seems like for the last number of years, TAs have, you know, sort of been a target. And this is just me, me speaking to you. It just seems like the TAs have been a target from the state level primarily. When it comes to funding, you know, we depend on teachers' salaries, that type thing comes from the state, and as you know, the Governor has sent his proposed budget in, and the House and the Senate have not sent theirs in, so more than likely, there's gonna be changes to what the Governor has sent in, and we don't have a clue what those changes will be. All that we do know is several things. Number one, we don't want to lose any TAs. We don't want this to happen, because I know, and this board knows, that TAs are a valued asset to the school system. I've heard it said that they're not, that, you know, they don't, they do much more than put bulletin boards up and, you know, run to the principal's office or to the office and this and that and all. There's a lot more to it. There's a lot more to it than that. That might have been what it was initially, to help teachers out, but we live in different times than we used to live in, and the children are different now than they were, and it takes a whole lot more than what it used to take. And so, we don't really know where the budget's gonna end up. We're hoping that we don't, but if we do, we know that we have to have a plan in place. And that's why the, the plan that we're voting on tonight is the plan in the event that the Governor's budget is approved as presented. But like I said, you know, it may not be that way, and, you know, we're hoping that it won't be. But the other, the only, only other alternative that we would have would be to ask the Commissioners to fund teacher assistance, which would be an ongoing, reoccurring expense every year right on. And truthfully, you know, as much as I would like to think, I don't think that we could get the Commissioners to give us $2.3 million on an ongoing basis to provide for teacher assistance. We have asked in our proposed budget that we sent to the County Commission, and they'll be reviewing this, and they'll be going over it, but if my memory serves me correct, and Ms. Klutz is here with us tonight, and our Chief Financial Officer, I believe we're asking in our expansion budget for something like $23 million over and above what our normal allocations are, and that's for capital needs and facility needs, that type thing. And to be honest with you, I don't think we'll even get anywhere near that, but you, you have to ask for it. If you don't ask, you surely won't get. And, but where it's gonna fall out, I don't know. All I know is, is that we have to make provisions, and that's what this is all about tonight on the consent agenda, that particular item. And that don't, may not mean a lot to, to you, because I know some of you that are here tonight, and I appreciate you taking a stand and letting people know that you care about your job, you care about the children, and that, you know, you don't want this to happen. Well, I promise you, I'll join you, because I don't want to see it happen either. But the plan has to be in place in the event that it does come down to that, and I hope that you'll understand that. Okay, Dr. Shepherd, did you have some comments that you want to add in the Superintendent's section?
Chairman, just a few items and reminders I want to share. First, I'd like to extend my congratulations once more to all the students and staff who are recognized here this evening. It's great dedication and commitment to excellence throughout our school district, and thank you for that. Last week, we celebrated three important observances, and I don't want to miss an opportunity to highlight the importance of these observances. They were National Nurses Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, and School Nutrition Employee Week. I want to offer my thanks and gratitude to our school nurses for all that they do each day to keep our students healthy. Special thanks to our partners at Cabarrus Health Alliance for providing us with such outstanding group of professionals. We also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week last week. Many of our schools held special recognition events for their teaching staff. No, no amount of thanks is adequate, but to the men and women who get up each day and work hard to educate the students in Cabarrus County schools, I say thank you. And then, third, last week, we celebrated School Nutrition Employees Week. We appreciate the dedication of the employees in our child nutrition department who work each day to provide nutritious and delicious meals to each of our students. This past Saturday, we also celebrated with our Early College High School, as the school held its first graduation ceremony. Twenty-four students graduated, receiving both a high school diploma and either an associate's degree or two years of tuition-free college credit. And we're so proud of the students who took a leap of faith four years ago and enrolled in this program, and prouder still that they persevered and are now members of the first graduating class of the Cabarrus-Kinapolis Early College High School. In addition, our Education Leadership Alliance, with collaborative partners throughout Cabarrus County, such as the Cabarrus County Education Foundation and the Howard N. Lee Institute out of Raleigh, continued to gain traction as we host our first focus group in the Logan Community. You'll recall that our pilot community, this is where, our pilot community where we've asked our very strong partner, The United Way, to come in and lead a session with the residents and stakeholders on listening to what they perceive our community needs. And we're appreciative of the Hayes Foundation for providing a grant to host next Monday, May the 20th, Listening Session. The end of year is quickly approaching, and students have begun year-end testing. I encourage parents and students to review the information that we've shared over the past weeks about the new assessments that students will take, called the Measures of Student Learning, or MSLs. Our schools also have sent information home about the new assessments and the year-end testing calendar. Now, you can find this information on our district website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. Just select the Parents tab, and then select the link titled "End of Year Testing." And to our students and parents, staff, and community, thank you for another outstanding year. And congratulations to the class of 2013, and let's finish the year with the same focus, determination, and commitment we had back in August. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I appreciate your comments tonight, and my Vice Chair has made mention that he wants to say a word or two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only wanted to say very briefly that, and I think I can speak for the other Board Members up here, that we, we concur with the comments that you made about teacher, teacher assistance and what they do, and that we, as a board at the local level, do not want to see that, that cut. So I just wanted to interject briefly that, that we're in support of, of your comments.
Well, while he was saying that, my computer just went blank, but I'll, I'll switch over here, so, let's see. We, I noticed our guest speakers is coming up next, and let me just, here, I'll get it just in a second here, for some reason. We, we went paperless here a little over a year ago, and when we done that, it's all on computer screen, but I've got it now, though. We've got, the following guest speakers have requested to address the board tonight, and as I made mention earlier in the announcements, if you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you have five minutes. And when you come to the podium, you'll see a little timer on your left, on your left, and it's in front of us, but it'll be on your left, and that timer will let you know when your time is about to run out, so we can move along and keep the meeting rolling. Our first speaker tonight is Katie Lassavell, and she wants to come speak to us. Is she with us tonight? I probably didn't pronounce that correctly. I'm not the, Lassavelli, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we've got you here, Katie. Glad, thanks for coming.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Schu, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Katie Icaveli, and I'm a junior at J.M. Robinson High School. MSLs were created to assess teacher effectiveness. However, student grades are now tied to these exams. This seems like a huge trade-off at the expense of students in exchange for what little money is provided by Race to the Top. As this is the first time the state is issuing these particular tests, there is no guarantee that everything will resolve fairly and smoothly. From what I understand, these tests are supposed to be graded in comparison to previous years. However, as we students will be the first to take them, the grading system is unclear. If the state is seriously considering implementing the MSL long-term, then it would be understandable if current students took it as an experimental group. But it is very confusing and unfair that these new tests should count for 25% of our final grade in a particular class. One aspect of this testing that really bothers me is that it has been announced mid-year. That is, students who have taken classes that now coincide with MSLs last semester do not have to take the test, while students with those classes this semester do. Also, seniors who performed well in certain classes last semester could protect their grade by exempting the exam. Now they cannot. Students this semester now face the MSL instead of a teacher-made test. They are unsure of what to expect. They are unsure of what to expect. Clearly, these students, especially seniors, are at a disadvantage. Aside from those of us who are considering top schools that are very hard to get into, those who struggle just to pass their classes will also suffer as this can make or break them for graduation. I am greatly concerned over the untimeliness and the lack of information provided to teachers. Many who choose to plan a schedule for the semester ahead of time are now unsure they'll have sufficient time to teach the material needed as they did not know what the test, the test will be administered until a couple of weeks into second semester. And they did not know until recently what might be on the test. Time that we will be spent on labs, enrichment, or retesting is now virtually unavailable and exam days have been moved to earlier. The small amount of questions on the test also worries me. A 90-minute test cannot accurately show how much students have learned over the past 90 days. A lot of worry has been generated over the fact that those who fail are not allowed to retake it, unlike with EOCs or EOGs. Also, now that teachers must find time to grade the free response section, classes without AP or MSL exams now do not have review periods, placing several students at a disadvantage. Finally, our classes have been told that there is confusion between which versions of which curriculums are really being tested on. For example, Algebra II teachers have been given review problems that test knowledge recently made optional to teach and has been taught to honor students some years since, but not regular classes. All classes taking the English MSLs will be given free response questions that closely resemble the work done in my AP language class, severely placing less experienced regular students at a disadvantage. I find it unfair that this new form of state testing should begin mid-school year and count for a quarter of each student's grade in a class. I share these concerns with you for your consideration and with the hope that you will find a way, either now in the future, to make these assessments fair for students and to make them be a true reflection of student learning. I encourage you to use this semester as only a trial. Please don't hang our grades and our futures in the balance. Thank you and have a great evening.
I think you prepared a little bit for that. You speeded it up a little bit, too. That's good. We thank you for it. Our next speaker is Ms. Emily Bajet. Is Ms. Emily Bajet here? Thank you, Emily.
Hello. My name is Emily Bajet and I'm a freshman at J.M. Robinson High School. Most of her parents and teachers have heard the question, how do we use this in life or how's this going to help us to get a job? Why do I need to know this? The answer usually goes along the lines of, you need to get into, you need this to get into a good college. You need to know how to get into a good job, need a good degree, and these subjects will help you get a good degree. We never had this opportunity when I was younger. The generation that has the world at our fingertips, the generation that has friends on different continents stays in touch with about everyone they meet. We are the generation that is all unique. We all learn in different ways. Some of us are terrible test takers, some of us are terrible in the classroom, some of us have learning disabilities, ADHD, ADD, and dyslexia. We are all not in the same class. The part I do not understand is why you're testing us the same. We are all different and that, then why are you training us the same? The MSLs are testing us basically on our memory. Some people are extremely smart but have terrible memories. The ability to remember the tiniest of details should not classify us as smart. If you want the results that you expect, then you're going to have to change this. Yes, the wiring portion is a good way to test our learning. However, you do not give the time for the teachers to grade them. For example, English teachers have two questions on each student paper. Each teacher has three classes with about an average of 30 students. In each class, that would be 60 questions to grade. In total, that is 180 questions. If that's not bad, each question has to be looked over twice. That means one teacher has to look over 360 questions. You give them four days to grade them. In addition, while they are finished in their school year, if they grade each question without stopping during the school day, they have 11 minutes on each question. This is not including when they have to instruct their classes, answer student questions, eat lunch, watch the hallways during class, change, answer the emails or answer the phone. If you took out 30 minutes from each period, 25 minutes for lunch, and five minutes for each class change, then you give less than a minute to grade each question. How do you think about two minutes is enough to accurately grade and assess writing portions of a final exam? Is that fair? Fair to the students? Fair to the teachers? Or fair to the results? MSLs have major problems. The first is they're being used to measure teachers' ability to teach the same year, that they have changed the curriculum. You will not get the results you want. Teachers create a process that will, they know what subjects to emphasize, certain subjects in a glance over others. They do not know this because they don't know what's going to be on the test. You need to give them time to figure that out. In addition, you're implementing them in the middle of a semester. Last semester, we did not have to do this. You cannot change something in the middle of the year. At the very least, wait until next year. Thank you for your time and I hope you will consider what I just said.
You did an excellent job as well. Our next speaker is Natalie Dillahun. Is Natalie here? Okay. Our next speaker will be Eric Sanchez. Is Eric here?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
My name is Eric Sanchez. I'm also a junior at J. Robinson High School. And first off, I'd like to thank the board for letting me speak to you today. Well, the school board claims that the purpose of the MSLs is to evaluate student learning as well as teacher effectiveness. Teacher-made exams have been canceled in exchange for the MSLs. And since this is the first time that we are attempting the MSLs, you're basically turning our class into a bunch of guinea pigs. And I'm wondering if it's really fair to count this as a grade for students and even as an evaluation for teachers. Perhaps it would be in the best interest of all parties to count this year's MSL as more of a practice test for the subsequent exams. Otherwise, if the MSLs turn out to be failures, then the students and teachers have in turn been screwed over. And also, what qualifies, well, I'm wondering what qualifies the administration of these tests to students and teachers? It is quite difficult to regulate these classes since they're so different and maybe so little is known about these subjects. I'm sure many of you have not taught all types of classes, for example, music classes. And according to the Department of Public Instruction on their website, the MSLs are now being planned for classes such as the performing arts. And I've come to question that decision on several grounds. First, I'm wondering in what way it is even possible to create such exams? In bands, there is a wide variety of instruments with different strengths and weaknesses. In chorus, different people have different strengths in their singing and so on and so forth. There's nothing common in the performing arts. Another problem is just the unfairness that would come along with it. As an AP Music Theory student, and I just finished my exam at 3:00 today, I can say with certainty that I probably know a little bit more about music than some of the non-AP Music Theory students, making any type of exam in any performing arts a little bit unfair. And since the MSLs are also meant to assess teachers, it is a little unfair to assess, you know, the chorus and band teachers. If you think of a freshman doing bands, they've been doing bands since sixth grade, but you're now grading the teacher who they've only had for one year. That somehow seems a little bit unfair as the ratio is a three-to-one ratio as to how long that teacher's been with them and how they may have to correct all sorts of problems. And just in total with all other classes, non-band related, the teachers have had very little time to prepare for these exams and some know very little about what is still to be on there and they're struggling to try to catch up with what we need. So I'm asking the school board to thoroughly consider using this MSL as purely experimental and in the hopes of recognizing faults in the procedure. By considering the bias in the assessments of students and in the assessments of teachers, the faults in the current process will become obvious. And unfortunately, I'm running out of time.
Thank you, Eric. And our next speaker is Ms. Leys Rogers. Is Ms. Rogers here?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Schu and Superintendent Shepherd and board members. It's good to see you tonight. I have a hard act to follow. I am in awe of our well-prepared young people here tonight. And as a parent and also as an educator, I applaud them for having the courage to come up here and speak and also to share such eloquent remarks. I am not that well-prepared at all, so I'll do my best. And I also want to second the thoughts of many tonight that our wonderful assistant teachers in Cabarrus County are a gift and they bring support to reading, to learning the difficult task of calculation in our primary grades, and to educate diverse citizens. So I second that as well. But I'm here on another issue. I'm here on the STEM process that I have a concern about. First of all, thank you so much for hearing our concerns and expanding the STEM program in Cabarrus County, opening Patriots as a STEM site as well for elementary school. We are grateful for that additional opportunity. However, I did want to express two concerns. One is that with that opening of Patriots, as you know, that's been a very rushed process for parents and children. We've gone to the open houses, we've talked to teachers and principals, we've taken our children to see the facilities. But we don't, haven't really had enough time to evaluate these opportunities, but have had to sign off on forms and choose options very, very quickly. My greatest concern is that as we've gone through this process all year, we've been anticipating, hoping to be placed in the Coltrane Web magnificent STEM program that they've built over the last few years. And many of us, of course, cannot fit into that school and have been given the option of the Patriots Elementary School. And I'm in that situation, as is my son. My concern is that at the same time, we've had a charter school open on the other side of Concord. And I believe that many of the elementary schools are going to be in a very fluid enrollment situation over the coming weeks because of charter placements. So what I am asking is that as slots continue to move around, as parents choose to move their students to various schools, including those charter opportunities, I ask that you consider the original spirit and intention of the STEM lottery process. And that was, we signed off on enrolling in or hoping to enroll in Coltrane Web. I have asked about any additional open slots and have been told that those will be closed and not available anymore. I ask, in the spirit of the original lottery, that if open slots are available at Coltrane Web in this fluid process in the coming weeks, that you still allow people who originally signed up for Coltrane Web to have access to those slots, not just Patriots. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you also, Ms. Rogers. Our next speaker is Mr. Bobby Jones. Is Mr. Jones here?
Chairman Schu, Superintendent Shepherd and board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bobby Jones. I'm first and foremost proud to be a Cabarrus County resident. I also have a daughter that attends WM Irving Elementary. She's a rising first grader. And over the course of this past school year, I've had the distinct honor and privilege of serving the students, parents, teacher assistants, teachers and faculty and staff of WM Irving through their Parent Teacher Association. And I'm speaking to you tonight out of concern for our teacher assistants and how that they play an integral part of the development. And I speak as a parent, as a role model for my daughter, that these folks play such an instrumental part. And to go without and even consider that as a possibility is shortchanging our future leaders. And so, you know, I support the board in what it's trying to do, but I believe the board has to do more. I mean, I read over the proposed budget. I've spent extensive time over the last few days looking at the different things and I know that the choices that have to be made cannot be easy. And I'm not here tonight to belittle any other school's situation or priority, but I believe you folks have to go back to the drawing board and look at this closer. And to fight for our teacher assistants, that is, that's the integral part. Without these folks that participate in the leader reading workshops, the math workshops, interacting, behavioral interventions, and the things that helped develop my daughter Olivia among other children, what are we saying to our future? So I will quickly get off this podium and move this along and highly encourage each member of your board to reconsider this plan that you're voting on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for coming and being with us tonight. Our next speaker is Mr. Brian Doolan. Is Mr. Doolan here? I think he's making his way to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Schu and board members. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Brian Doolan and I'm a third-grade teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary School. I'm currently serving in my seventh year of teaching. I attended grade K-12 in Cabarrus County and I take pride in knowing that I was educated in a system that values and appreciates all personnel within a school. When thinking back to my elementary school experiences, I can name every teacher that I had. More importantly, I can also tell you the names of assistants that I had during my time at Wolfmeadow Elementary. Even back then, I never thought of those ladies as an assistant. In my mind, I always thought that they were the same as a teacher, which is still the way I feel to this very day. During my seven years thus far as a teacher, I have continued to respect the position of teacher assistants in a way that many will never know or relate with. Teacher assistants are one of the most vital positions within a school setting. Often, I hear people outside of school talking about assistants as if they are just an extra set of eyes, a paper checker, or a bus driver. Those people cannot be any more incorrect. Yes, they do help with those things. However, their list of skills and responsibilities goes much further than that. I would like to mention some things that everyone should know about teacher assistants. Teacher assistants teach direct instruction groups. Teacher assistants teach guided reading groups. Teacher assistants teach math groups. Teacher assistants teach one-on-one intervention students within the classroom. Teacher assistants teach classroom teachers strategies that we may have never thought of. While we know that the money from the state of North Carolina, or the lack of, is the key variable in this potential process of laying off, I can't help but find it an extremely sad reality that may take place. The thought of losing half of the assistants in this county should break the heart of all. These people have dedicated many years to being educators. Some of them may not have degrees in teaching, but they are educators and they deserve to do what it is that they love and enjoy doing. Please know that these people are irreplaceable and highly regarded by everyone. In closing, I want that one fact to remain clear. Teacher assistants aren't just assistants, but they are educators. Please consider everything within your capabilities to help save these jobs. Thank you.
You did an excellent job there. Our next speaker is Ms. Judy Brant. Ms. Brant, are you here tonight? I think she's coming on up here.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Chairman and school board members. I am Judy Brant, State President of the North Carolina Association of Teacher Assistance, and I bring you greetings from our state board. I want to thank you for allowing us to speak for Cabarrus County Teacher Assistance. My heart is broken because of the premature cuts the school board and superintendent are going to vote on tonight. My sources in Raleigh told me just today that there is a lot of deliberation concerning schools and teacher assistants in the Senate. I agree for the assistants who will lose their job if this budget passes. However, they will persevere. This is what assistants do. But my fear is mostly for the children. Who will have the time to work with the struggling or left-behind children? Who will have time to listen to their stories from home because there's no one at home to listen to them? Who will have time to celebrate their accomplishments? Who? I will tell you, just as I told the Speaker of the House, Tom Tillis, the answer to my question is, no one. The teachers are already overworked. Most come in at 7:00 and don't leave till 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the evening. Now our state legislators and our local school boards are asking them to take on more. Our local and state leaders have forgotten that education is not a business. It is a passion to see... It is a passion to see our future succeed. Children need to be guided and taught the love of learning, not given customer service. Somewhere along the line, we have forgotten that children are children, not products. I assure you, teacher assistants have not forgotten the children. We make time for our children and their needs. We make sure every need is met physically, mentally, and educationally. Recently, former State Superintendent Bob Etheridge made a statement to the press. He asked, "Why is our educational system going backwards? Why are we taking people out of the classroom? Why aren't we adding more people to the classroom?" Recently, one of our state senators made the statement on weekly legislative review. He said, "I don't care if there's 15 students in a room or 35, as long as the teacher gets it done." How sad that our elected leaders feel this way about our students and our teachers. Well, you may say, "Sister, you're preaching to the choir," but ultimately, when and whatever funds come down, it's your choice of what to do with those funds. I would like to refer to House Bill 974, Section 15, Section 7.15, LEA Budgetary Flexibility. For physical years 2013, 14, and 1415, local school administrator units shall make every effort to reduce spending whenever and whatever such budget reductions are appropriate, with the goal of protecting direct classroom services, such as teacher assistants listed first, and classroom teachers. In making reduction, local school administrative units shall first consider reductions to central office administration and other administrative functions. I think if your TAs knew there was a plan for the central office administration, that the TAs would not feel like they are being hung out to dry. NCATA is asking you to look for places to cut, to find money to keep teacher assistants in your classrooms. Our theme for the next year's NCATA conference is, "Teacher Assistance Open Treasures in Students." She's handing you my students. I have 38 students I do intervention with every day. Those students are jewels in my eyes. It's my job to polish and restore the beauty in each one of them. Studies tell us that if a child can't read at the end of third grade, they'll always be behind. If jobs are cut, who are going to take care of my little jewels? We ask for your support in writing letters and making phone calls to our legislators in Raleigh. If you need names of specific people to contact, I will be glad to provide those for you. And again, I say thank you for letting us speak.
I didn't know you could speak so eloquently. She did a good job. Thank you. Our next speaker is Latonya Nesmith. Is Latonya here? There she comes.
Hi, I thank you for this moment to speak before the board. My name is Latonya Nesmith. I'm a resident here of Concord. I moved here from New York. I came here, thank you, I came here, you know, to move south. And since I've been here, I've had nothing but from Rocky River to Wyancoff, which my daughter was, won the President's Award when she graduated from Wyancoff last year, up into Northwest. I've had no problems with the school system. It has been great from the teachers assistants and everybody else. I appreciate everybody. But while my daughter was on a field trip to Washington, DC on March 27th of this year, her eighth-grade trip, she was a victim of a racial comment. I went to the school for help with the situation because I don't raise my kids to be racist. I'm not racist. I teach my kids to love and respect each person regardless of race or creed, and I've never had this problem for the four years that I've been here, and I really wanted this matter addressed. I went for help. I got nothing. I was told that they would investigate, and they would get back to me in three days. It's been since I saw, I spoke with them on April 8th. Today is May 13th. I still have no response. I was told that the chaperone that made the racial remark to my daughter was one of their coaches, and I was told what they didn't think or what they thought he meant. As a parent, we tell our kids and we teach our kids right from wrong, but I can't sit here as a parent before you and tell you that my kids go to school and won't do nothing wrong, because when we leave their sight. So for me to be told that what was thought or what they thought was meant, no apology, no anything was given to me from my daughter, I'm very outraged. My daughter's to the point that she don't even want to go to school, and I hate that my daughter feel that way because I want them to have a good education, and I want to continue to live here, and I want them to be happy where they live, and I want them to be happy at school. So I just wanted to address the board about the situation. Thank you very much.
Our last speaker on the list tonight, I believe this is the last speaker, is Ms. Quinn Pilatus. Is Ms. Pilatus here?
Thank you for having us this evening. I'm speaking on behalf of the concerned parents of Patriots Elementary School in reference to the questionable decision to dismantle the current administration at Patriots. There's a measure of accountability, and we're here to let you know that we're going to hold you accountable. We are parents, we're taxpayers, and we're the voters who put you here. We, you in turn, appointed Dr. Shepherd as superintendent, and it is our hope that there is an informed, honest, and balanced leadership in place, yet recent events suggest otherwise. Our school is only three years old and has had its own unique challenges in being started. Mr. Hull and Mr. Powell have done an exceptional job of opening the school and moving the staff, students, and community forward. Our school has just begun to jail in its third year, and the possibility of dismantling the current administration needs substantial reason. So we bring the following points to you. Point one: No input was solicited for this decision. Mr. Hull was not consulted. He's moving administrators from one assignment to another without having one single conversation with a supervisor, a routine practice. To think that Mr. Hull was trusted to lead the largest school in the district for seven years, opened the brand-new Patriots Elementary, increased Patriots enrollment by 40% with the STEM, and he wasn't trusted to have one conversation about moving his only administrator. Could someone answer why he wasn't worthy of this conversation? Point two: Where is the communication? Clearly, there's no communication with the Patriots administration about this decision. It was an edict. Questions from parents and staff have gone mostly ignored. However, the few cut-and-paste responses have given very different answers that make us even wonder, "Are you on the same page?" Somebody says, "Oh, he doesn't have STEM experience, got to get somebody that has that." "Oh, he doesn't have elementary education experience, got to get somebody with that." The band's degree is in elementary education. We all have to learn about the STEM. You going to replace all the teachers out there? You going to replace all the... The people at Coltrane Web had to learn it. Would you want to replace all them and bring STEM people in? The logic doesn't hold. There are vague expressions that it's part of this master plan that we're supposed to trust in. "Sorry, I'm not a part of the cult. I need a little more information." More interesting than the responses, as I pointed out, is that you're not on the same page. So it's really clear to us that communication's not an issue when you're getting a different answer from the four people who took the time to respond. Third point: Mr. Powell's career aspirations were not to stay at, excuse me, were to stay at Patriots. You know how we know this. It's because we know the man, we talk to the man. He's as genuine a person as we will, as you'll find, and if you're around him for any length of time, you too would know that his heart is at Patriots. And the amount of time and effort he has poured into the students, parents, and teachers is only matched by that of Mr. Hull's. The fact that you don't know him is only because you haven't taken the time to darken the door of Patriots, because that's where he is the majority of the time. Point four: Where is the board involvement in the area of personnel? After all the emails, phone calls, and requests for someone to intervene and stop this ill-thought-out decision, has anyone bothered to come to Patriots? Has anybody come to talk to the teachers to see what they're thinking? Has anybody bothered to come out and find out what Mr. Hull and Mr. Powell really have to say about things? Do you care about the parent, the parent concerns? Why is there such an indifferent attitude as it relates to personnel? This is the single most important aspect of the school board's duties, and the minimum effort to ensure quality is not being done. Please, board members, go to the schools, talk to the staff, get more involved. If you are washing your hands of this particular injustice, that's fine, but please get involved in personnel going forward. Find out why Vic Shandor, Brian Schultz, Dana Jarrett, and other great people have left this district. You may be surprised at what you discover. It's easy to say that Dr. Shepherd has sole discretion, but if you read the Board of Education Policy Manual, it indicates in several places that the board has general control and supervision of all matters pertaining, excuse me, to the public schools of the school system. Among those duties is hiring a superintendent and evaluating and responding to recommendations made by the superintendent. Furthermore, the manual states the superintendent is directly responsible to the board in the performance of his or her duties. Point five: The Patriots staff was told point-blank that our administrators were not leaving by Dr. Shepherd. When are we going to get a response to that? When are you going to come talk to us about not telling us the whole story? Trust was just becoming established. There was a lot of anxiety. People were folding in behind Dr., excuse me, Mr. Hull and Mr. Powell, and you pulled the rug out from under them. This matters. So board, going forward, be more involved. Stop things like this from happening, and I pray that there's a way you can fix what you've already done. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And once again, thank all the speakers. As I think Ms. Brant said, you know, it takes a lot of courage to stand before the board, especially the young people, and you all did so well, and I thank you so much for bringing here. And I've made notes, and I'm sure the board members made notes, and we'll take all this under advisement. All right, we're going to move along now, and the next item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the consent agenda. And, board members, you know, these are the items that we talked about at the work session, and I want to bring back to your memory some of the items that are on there. You know, if you have your list there, of course, the policies that we looked at, and also the calendar, the workday, and the resolution for to construct the crossing at Wyancoff School Road, and the plan for reduction in force of classified personnel, and then, of course, the budget amendments. And under normal circumstances, and I'm going to have to confer with our attorney, Mr. Don Raycage, you got your ears on? Okay. Normally, when we do a consent agenda, obviously, we've discussed those items, and the board has agreed that they go to the consent agenda, and normally, it's one vote. We take a motion and we vote, and the consent agenda, as it's presented, is approved. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Now, if we have an item, such as this item tonight about the reduction in force, if we had a board member or more board members, I mean, the vote's going to have to take place either way. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, you've got the consent agenda, you can vote on that. If a board member wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda, that's an option. So a board member could move to ask that an item come off the consent agenda, and that would be voted on individually.
Okay. Well, I talked with Ms. Carpenter earlier today, and obviously, she wasn't here with us last week because she had eye surgery, and she wasn't here, and so she didn't get a chance to, you know, express her concern about the item that we're speaking about. And so I'm going to ask Ms. Carpenter where you're at on the teacher assistant part. Do you want to have pulled that off?
Well, as I mentioned to you, and I was just going to ask for a point of privilege on this, because, as I mentioned to you this afternoon, how I felt on this, because, as I told you this afternoon, if it stayed as it is right now, I would not vote for the consent agenda, because I would vote no on this. I feel very strongly about this, because one of the things, I feel that we should really stand firm on this and support our teacher assistants. I feel that we should make a point to say that, you know, that we need to keep them, and that, you know, we need to make a point to our legislators, and I feel they've been used as pawns the last couple of years. And so I cannot vote for this. I know we need, you need to say, "We've got to have a plan in place," but I just can't vote for it. I really can't. And if you want to pull it off, or if you want to, I know y'all have already approved this and have it as a consent, I can just vote no on it. But, I mean, y'all have already gone through this, and I'll just vote no for the consent agenda. But I just, I just feel very strongly on this. One of the suggestions I wanted to make when the people were in the room, I really would like to see the teacher's assistants to do a video showing the governor how much you really do. Send it to his office and write those letters. I know how much they do. I've gone into the school system, and I see how much these teacher assistants do. They are not just helping the education of these students, but, I mean, it comes to safety, it comes to education. They are doing so much, and I think we are going to be doing such an injustice if we cut the hours, we've done so much, and we have said so many times, "We're going to put people before things," and I think we need to still do that.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for your comments. And as I said in the beginning of this, this is highly unusual, because a consent agenda is just that, it's a consent agenda. We vote on it, and we move on. But I felt like in her absence from last Monday, that I needed to give her a chance to say what she had to say, even though you and I talked today, but you didn't talk to the other board members, and I wanted them to know where you were at as well. But being that as it is, and as I said earlier, you know, it's going to depend on the governor's budget. That's where the money comes from, and I don't want to be redundant on what I've already said. The money will have to be there to fund teacher assistants, and just because the governor's budget don't have that in there now does not mean that it won't. And so we won't know that until, according to Ms. Clutz, sometime maybe July, we'll know. But in the meantime, though, we can't wait until we get the governor's budget and say, "Oh, well, you know, we should have made plans," and we didn't, and then we're at, "What do we do?" And so this is what the plan's for. And so anyway, with that being said, all the items on the consent agenda are presented to you, board members, and do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as it's presented?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a board member that's asked for one piece to pull off, so do we need to... Are we, are you asking us, are we voting to pull one off, or are we voting to approve the consent agenda?
No, she's just going to vote against the consent agenda.
You're going to vote against the entire consent agenda?
I'm just one member.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were, what we were doing.
Mr. Chairman, can I have a point of personal privilege on this?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm sorry that a lot of the people that came out to support the teachers' assistants have already left, but I think it is very, very important that you show this same energy that you brought to the meeting tonight to our state representatives. That would be Senator Fletcher Hartzell, Representative Lynda Johnson, Representative Larry Pittman, and Representative Carl Ford. And I want to read you an email that I sent to each of them last Tuesday. Dear Senator Hartzell, At last night's Cabarrus County School Board meeting, we took the preliminary steps to inform 94 teacher assistants in our district that they will be laid off at the end of this school year. It will be up to you and your colleagues to make sure this does not happen, and I am writing you to ask you not to approve that part of the governor's budget proposal. I know the legislature recently put increased emphasis on making sure all students are proficient in reading by the time they leave third grade. However, I have no idea how you expect our schools to make that happen if you take away teacher assistants from both second and third grade. Do you have something you are going to do to replace the work that the teacher assistants currently do? If you think teachers can simply take up the slack, then you need to become more familiar with what is going on in today's classroom. I get the impression that some of your colleagues want our public schools to fail. I hope you are not among that group. I would appreciate hearing your thoughts on this matter. Sincerely, Jeff Phillips, Member of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. As of 7:50 PM tonight, I have not heard from any of our four county representatives in response to that note. response to that note.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. I'd like to get a copy of that, if you don't mind, from my record, my file.
Did you send it to the governor also? He doesn't know.
Mr. Harrison, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just that I have not received a reply back from those state representatives and senator in four weeks, or three at least, in a similar email. And I would respectfully ask my representatives to reply. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And that's exactly what Ms. Carpenter said, you know, we need involvement from the teacher assistants, and, you know, as a whole, you know, those that support teacher assistants. I mean, we went to Raleigh just recently, Carolyn, myself, Rob, and who else went? Jeff? No, who was? Barry, yeah, Barry Schumacher. And we went and we talked to our representatives, sat down in their offices there at the legislature. And we obviously didn't do too good for right now. But like I said, the budget's not passed yet, you know, so, but anyway, we've got to move on, and the consent agenda is there, Board members, and do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
I'm going to move.
Okay, Mr. Kygram makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Monroe, it's 5-1 with Ms. Carpenter dissenting vote. Okay, Board members, we got to move on to our action agenda now, and this is the first item. We'll have Ms. Clutz to the podium on our action items, and we're going to talk about the athletics, and while she's getting ready, we need to pause for just about 10 seconds or so, so the cameraman can change disc.